That's going on. You don't have a notice here to what's going on Facebook. If I remember right. Yeah, it took me to another page, so, okay, so that's recording.
Thanks for joining us tonight for our council meeting. Mr. Mayor Travis can't be here tonight, so I'll be sitting in for him. First thing I'd like to ask, are there any changes to the agenda?
Council President Torres, we would ask that under new business, we add item number five, which will be discussion of potential bid on public works equipment. And then under executive session, we add a second executive session for the discussion of non-elected personnel.
Okay, with that, I'd like consideration to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'm Reggie Gill.
With that, are we doing a roll call on that, Ethan?
Yeah, we have a motion by Councilmember Farmer to approve the consent agenda for October 26, 2020, seconded by Councilmember Lawson.
Those in favor say aye. Those against, same. Motion passes. Next issue is public forum, anybody here to speak at public forum? No one moving, so there's no unfinished business, so we'll go to new business. First of all, we've, here it is at 7:03, we've got public hearing for 322 Harvey Property. And Ethan, you want to discuss?
Yeah. I'm just sitting here. Utilize different technology than I normally do during meetings. We do have the, you council passed resolution 914-2020-04, which is set today. It's time of date for show cause hearing for the property of 322 Harvey, based on a letter received from our building inspector listing conditions with the property. As noted in the agenda report, Mr. Stevens, property owner, has made contact with the city several times since receiving that resolution. He's currently working with his mortgage company. They have a program that he believes would assist. He has contacted Evergy as well to take care of the electrical service line that was, or service going into the home, and he has communicated that that has been repaired. Due to circumstances, he could not be here this evening, but can be present at our next meeting, which would be November 9th. So we are recommending, while he continues to investigate and gets more details about what that program might be able to help him with as far as remediation on the property, that we continue the hearing this evening until our next meeting on November 9th, to give him time to get that plan together and then come back and present to you all his plans. He has indicated a desire to remediate the issues with the property, you know, to try and bring it back up into code and compliance with our, with our city code, so.
All right, given that, I'd like a motion to continue this. Oh, sure.
He received his notification when?
He would have been mailed out right after the 14th, so I was of September, yeah.
More than 30 days.
More than 30, more than 30 days ago. Going past that property, my only concern is I haven't seen any action taken other than a few trees cut down right along the curb. I'm not sure it's on that same property. And with that, I think, anybody have any other question? I think I would make a motion to continue the public hearing, but also like to incorporate a motion into that motion or no extension beyond the next date. Would that be?
It's a one-time continuance, you can certainly do it that way if you wish, or at least alert the notified property owner that that's your intent.
I'd make a motion to continue the public hearing regarding 322 Harvey being a dangerous or an untested structure to the November 9th, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. with no extension beyond the November 9th extension with notification of the property owner or such.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? Motion carries.
Excuse me, I was here on behalf of the mortgage company on the property and I want to interrupt your whole procedure. I just want to let you know my client is also working to remediate these issues.
Okay, I'm sorry, who are you?
My name is Blair Deesey, I'm an attorney for MidFirst Bank. So they've been
And you have the loan on this property?
That's correct. On the 322, the Harvey. So they are, they've got, they've got something out there, takes the pictures and kind of drilled down on the issues and they will be working or at least assessing, you know, if it's in their interest to continue to work on the property. So they're, I obviously don't have an issue with the continuance this time, but I just want to let you all know that they're also actively working towards remediation.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving on, request for a street closure for a property auction. Ethan, you want to talk on this, but also?
Thank you, Council President Torres. We've been requested, basically, the auction on Phil Schmidt's properties is scheduled to be this Saturday. The auction company has indicated they have about four trailers of items that need to be displayed as part of this auction. They originally requested if we would consider Second Street being closed, talking to Police Chief Orem, and just kind of based on, you know, that we've had a similar request for an auction before in a street closure. We told them that Second Street being a truck route, being right there by Halsted Market and Jumpstart, which are two businesses that see heavy traffic in general, and that, you know, these aren't formal road closures where there's signs saying, you know, intersections outlet is closed, you know, there's usually just done with cones or something that we didn't really think that was maybe the best way forward. They asked about the possibility of alleys or even the 100 block of Chestnut then as alternatives. We said we would present all that to you to make the determination if you want to allow any of the requested street closures for the auction. Did talk to the head auction, you know, auctioneer. They would really appreciate one block somewhere because of the amount of materials they have in the store, and they do anticipate to have a pretty good sized crowd. And this is only for, you know, the property off of Second. It doesn't cover, you know, the property at Sixth and Halsted Road and all. They have a plan there, so. Like, I guess I'll just open it up for your all's discussion and you see some of the staff noted concerns. You know, a street closure is never, never perfect, there's always going to be some, some give or take. But, you know, Second Street is a, we feel maybe definitely not the best option with it being a truck route and the impact it would have to businesses, so.
Even with Chestnut closed, and it's still, with five residents in there?
Yeah.
They've got to figure out a way to be able to get it out on Saturday. I mean, what's the timeframe of the talking about that they want to close?
I want to say it was like nine to three. I mean, it's not an all-day affair. The auction out on the corner starts at 9:30 in the morning. Then it'll come to that auction to Second Street. Yeah. I've given that some thought. I've given that some thought, and I agree with you on Chestnut. There's going to be a whole lot of traffic and parking and so forth. Ethan, it's okay, I want to go talk to Vern and then maybe go talk to Nathan and see if we can arrange for, say Nathan and even my property there, utilize that market for auction parking to keep some of that parking off of the side streets. And then maybe, I think if we could even close it from the alley to the, behind the grocery store, to the corner of Second and Chestnut, that'd give that much room anyway. And I think that would be, should be pretty feasible because he's got the lot across the street on the south side that traffic pedestrians are going to be going through. I think we walk off half of, half of that Second Street block and maybe even block Chestnut as far as through traffic, but allow whoever lives there to where they can access or exit going north. What do you think about that, Josh?
As far as Second goes, I don't see an issue business-wise, traffic-wise, if we do the alley. I think the alley to Chestnut would work, other than, do you guys want, I don't know, I guess I'll defer to Pat on signage as far as the trucks that may be coming down Second Street. Do you have a way to defer them up Chestnut or somewhere to go around? If we block that half a block, they can't get through?
We could turn them into cool off-road.
Yeah, I mean, just wherever, I just don't know what signs
Well.
Is there the ability to do that?
I'm, I don't have a lot in the way of detour signs, if anything. And I think trying to turn them anywhere around there is going to be a problem because you're going to have probably cars parked three blocks away in every direction. If it's a very big auction, I mean, even if they do use that parking lot.
Would the hospital parking lot offer us any opportunity? If it's on trailers, can they be moved there? Can it be opened up for parking and not block any streets off? The trailers could be moved over there, but there's a lot of material on the floor on those sides of the building.
And aren't they doing the buildings also?
Yeah.
They're doing the buildings also.
Oh, yeah. And they utilize that, my Armoni's, my Cotty's building, like, they utilize all that empty yard space now and that's all displayed. And I don't know, I mean, obviously the hospital parking is still private, so they'd have to get permission to lock the
I'd also advise Vern, the fellow in charge of the auction, I told him, I said, your best bet right now is to go to the business owners, talk to the grocery store, talk to the March meets, anyone along there. Ask them if they have any objection to using the alleys because they're the ones that's going to interfere with this. I think they interfere with us. Unless you have a water making break on Saturday. There's no objection by business owners. I think if we blocked off Second Street from the intersection of Chestnut, at least to the alley, to the east side of that alley, and then get with the property owners and see if the alleys can be used, isn't that, isn't that more of their concern than ours?
It would still a lot of Jumpstart and the grocery store to be gotten to, and it really wouldn't jam up that, I don't see how it could jam up that intersection.
No, it'd be fine. If we go from Chestnut to the alley, that's, wouldn't cause any traffic issues, other than
I mean, I, yeah, they ask for a block, but, I mean, a half block. I think you have to leave the second Chestnut intersection open. I mean, or to allow trucks, because you have, they're coming off of 801. I mean, as Pat said, and I don't know that the auction company had, that's the issue you face with the, these smaller street closures is we don't really, because we don't do massive street repair and they'll have detour signage and alternate route to put up, and I don't think they do either, so it's kind of relying on volunteers to divert and some cones, so. I think if they can make it work, I think they'd be happy with anything. I mean, talking to Vern today, just whatever they can, they can do. I'm sure they would allow, you know, on Chestnut, I said that was my big concern for residents is, you know, lots of people use Saturday to go out and about their day, and if they're blocked in because of trailers, that's not really fair to them either. And some of the houses have alley access, but not all of them, so.
I plan to let people park in my building too.
Yeah.
And it should, it should go pretty quick. I wouldn't think they'll be at that building beyond four o'clock in the afternoon. Also, the auctioneer at Morgan School.
Yeah.
I think Nate, you suggested Nate has a lot of extra property that would allow for parking. You have things to do, as long as it was cleared with him.
I'll probably go over there in the morning, channel Nate and ask you if we can put up signage or if the auction company can put up signage to utilize that. First of all, because of that.
We're ready for a motion here. I would want to handle that motion. Want to leave it open for, in the top of the business or the box company in the top?
I think we could make a motion to close from Chestnut through the east side of the alley on Second and for the auctioneer to get approval from the business owners. And if they still approve, we approve it.
Second.
What else can you? Right. It'd be from a time, I'd say through, do we need to put a time on this? I'd say five o'clock.
Beginning when?
Beginning at 11:30, 11 o'clock.
How many do you want to start?
They're supposed to start, yeah, Sixth and Halsted.
Say 10:30, because they'll go an hour easy out there.
Well, they set, I think they'll set off Second first and then go over there as well.
I'd say
Or you're just going to make it at 8:30 then, how?
Say eight to five.
Eight to five?
Yeah, eight to five, okay. That's part of my motion.
You still second?
I still second. Is that legal?
Okay, if you want it legal, what's supposed to happen is the chief law enforcement officer for the city is supposed to provide a detailed traffic study and a recommendation to the city manager in writing. The city manager is to review that and provide that to you in advance of the meeting, along with his recommendations.
Second still stands.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those against? Motion carries. Okay, item four, Safe Route to School. Apparently, we're looking at a design firm to help in the planning of this project. We've been awarded a grant, and so.
You, council members, there is a scope of services from HWA Lockner. The city, out of, we sent 10 solicitations out, we received two responses back. Of those two, the Safe Route to School Review Committee looked at Lockner and met with them based on kind of their communicated past history, specifically with SRTS Phase One, which is where we're currently at. And then a lot of their projects were for cities about our size or even smaller. They really, the meeting went very well. And so the review committee's recommendation is for the city to select Lockner, excuse me, as that planning consultant. They provided a scope of services, they didn't quite have finalized contract, which is why the motion is written the way it is. This way we can keep the process moving. Unlike most contracts, this we know because it's a grant, that the project amount is going to be set. You know, that was part of the initial RFQ. To set that max price, so this isn't, you know, like some of our other construction contracts where we expect to see some variability or anything. You can see their estimate down there is actually below, but the max amount is 15,000, so we've asked council to just set that as the upper limit. And then if we come in under, that is absolutely great, fine, and a little smaller are matching contribution to that, or 20% contribution, excuse me. So, but this really gets started, and once we get it awarded, we can hit the ground running and hopefully by next year, we'll be reporting back and asking permission to submit for Phase Two.
Right, not that it matters, Ethan, where's our home base?
Lockner is based out of Salina. The other company that submitted was Wilson, and they're also based out of Salina.
They used to be our city engineers.
Yes.
All right, all right.
Would the, if I read this correctly, do we need to approve the project with 15,000? Or do we need to approve the project with 15,000 with our cost, the responsibility of our cost for 2,840?
This grant's handled as a reimbursement, so we would ask for the full amount of product. Yeah, so we prepay and then we submit any eligible expense, and they will refund 80% of those eligible expenses back up to a limit of 12,000, which is why they say 15 is the max, because
Looking for a motion on this item?
Yes, please.
If there are no further questions, it is motion to approve the selection of HWA Lockner. As contractors for City of Halsted, Safe Route to School Phase One project and authorize staff to prepare, finalize and execute necessary documentation, including contracts for a project amount up to 15,000.
Okay, you heard the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? Motion carries.
One more question on that. On the committee, how many people did we end up on that committee?
We have, oh, how many, Josh? Seven?
Seven or eight.
Yeah, seven or eight.
So that, that's the school. Two from the school, wasn't it?
Just one from the school, we have Dan Arido, the middle school principal. And then we have Grant, Josh, myself, Mayor Travis, Harvey County Health Department, and me and Carrie Harmon from the Kansas Learning Center. And we will also be looking at, now that we have a contractor selected, actually bringing in some more, like maybe one or two additional members from the community as Lockner starts to hit the ground running, be it parents or PTO or trying to get more, a few more eyes on it, but for the review phase, we were trying to move accordingly to keep our timeline.
Sure, sure. It'd be great if we could get at least one or two people from the Strategic Planning Committee to be involved, that was involved in that.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, we've got item five on a new business that we've added, and Ethan, I did not get that written down in time, what was that topic?
That topic is a consideration of potential, I guess, bidding for public works equipment. Did you want to handle that before the work session, discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. No, no, let's go to item four, all right? Discussion for work section topics. And we were talking before the meeting here, but we come up with three different topics that are pretty near and dear to us. Animal control is one of them. Sam, you had a couple others you brought up. And code enforcement was the other. And I had a resident come in last meeting and talk to us about cart cleaning. We've got three topics on there, we got anything else we want to hand out there?
Animal control, code enforcement, building inspection.
Building inspection, right, right.
I said that can be lumped into the code enforcement discussion.
You guys still going to be able to provide those
Yes.
to us before the next work session?
Yep, I will get those sent this week. I guess just on clarification for animal controls, so we know either what information to come prepared for. Are you guys talking animal control codes or more like animal control response and what that's look like, since the ACL position went away?
My, my thoughts on that, Ethan, and I don't even know if it can be done. You tell me, you tell us. We've got animal control, we have code enforcement. We have about two or four different areas that aren't being apparently addressed in fashion that maybe they should be and could possibly, a couple of those things or three be put together to create a responsible person to take care of it. Kind of get it to where someone's focused on it.
So we have code enforcement and building inspector inspection, which would be basically two sister subjects that somebody would be versed in handling.
But the idea is to make someone responsible for that.
Right, right.
Basically, that was a new position.
Now, actually, my thought on it, we've taken animal control and we've given that to our law enforcement. I don't know why we couldn't put code enforcement along with that to put a little more responsibility on person. If they're driving around the city all the time and you see if somebody's doing a project, very simple, make a note, give that to Ethan to check, is there a building permit issued for that project? So those two, I think, could be put together pretty easily. And we want to, we want to try and do this in a strategic fashion that doesn't cost the city a lot more money to get it done, but what?
What were the two that you wanted to put together?
Code enforcement.
And building inspection?
Yes.
No, no.
Animal control.
Animal control.
And I would add another topic for your work study. Public nuisances fall into the category generally as well. That's some of the other stuff that isn't necessarily as part of code enforcement, but it is so prevalent, the nuisance vehicles, tall rats, all that kind of stuff, that falls, we use public nuisance or nuisance in a lot of cases to bring it in an expeditious way before the court, because it's municipal court type of case in those instances. Sometimes that will get action more quickly than anything else. We need to talk about when, where and how on that in terms of, not because I don't know, but because I want to know what you want done from the city's perspective in terms of enforcement and for Ethan's sake as well. So we know who gets it, where does it go, how does it get written out? What do we want to do with it? Does it run through municipal court? Does it get handled another way? Are we going to need an environmental hearing officer, which is usually the judge, and just holding, sitting with a different how? Anything else to discuss in terms of procedure?
Okay.
This is the one you wanted me to be around?
Yeah.
You should cut these down then.
Ethan, one thing I talked about in the past also about this strategic plan that we had in the committee, and have we had any citizens coming forward to want and volunteer to be part of a group, part of a organization? We've had the study done, the next thing is to really start moving forward on some of this.
Yeah. Nothing, I mean, formal, I mean, there's, we have it really, and it's almost one of that, you know, beautification to me, I can't say that I've seen a massive grassroots. I mean, there has been the one individual who might express interest, but, you know, the, the plan more encompassed like for a committee reform and that really kind of again gets back to whether the city wants to try and spearhead that from the governing body and actually, you know, set a limited committee up and then try and solicit people to be on it or wait to see if there's grassroots. The strategic plan didn't really delineate of which of those methods would be better. I mean, there's, but I would say I've not been approached by a vast majority of, you know, a group of people that want to pursue downtown beautification, everything has a net.
Well, with that, I'd like to reach out to citizens of the community. If they're, if you're out there, we've got this work session coming up. Possibly if you reach out to us before the work session, and we can see what we have to work with as we go into this work session to talk about this subject.
You'll probably be note your strategic plan is moving forward. We have, we have actually taken the Safe Walks to School as part of that, and that's a pretty major
Right, go ahead. Okay, with that, topic five, I got carried away, a little ahead of myself here. The acquisition of equipment, is that right, Ethan?
Yep.
Okay, you want to speak to us on that also?
Sure. This came about Kansas Department of Transportation is auctioning some excess equipment through Purple Wave. Part of this is Part of this is dump trucks, our dump trucks are, are well aged and we had one slated for new replacement. Um, we have single axle trucks, um, the state has tandem, but just kind of looking at availability, um, even if we were going. We thought that maybe if we were to bid on some of the better models that KDOT has, this would be a good way for the city to see if a tandem truck. Would fit our needs, um, replace at least our oldest unit that definitely needs replaced. But kind of get us in the door and let the guys, um, see how well it works for various aspects. There's some concerns that it might, you know, be too big for certain utilization or, or less, and I can let Pat fill you in more, but. Uh, the current trucks we had actually came our old KDOT or county trucks.
State.
State trucks, so, um, we bought this before and with our general budget concerns, this is obviously much cheaper than just buying a brand new one at the gate. And there's multiple trucks available, so we can be pretty. Selective in, in what we bid or not bid on, and this is not definitely trying to obtain one. Um, we thought, you know, we asked for max authority, which would go over my spending limit of. Twenty thousand, which would include the uh, the buyer's premiums and see us obtaining a truck, you know, at that seventeen, eighteen thousand dollar range max. Um, which is not the price they're at now, but by the end of the auction. This week it could be, um, but we think again, it's a, it's a less cost effective way for us to, or a more cost effective way for us to maybe. Get in, uh, we definitely have one truck that has some bad issues and stuff that needs to be replaced as soon as possible, but lets us put off that. Uh, brand new purchase, um, for a couple of years maybe.
Well, if you have to speak to that, do you have any idea of the range of acquisition of a new, of a new vehicle, new truck?
Uh, I did get in some pricing on a single axle, that was around sixty-five thousand.
That's on a new truck?
Yeah, that was new.
What are the ages of the vehicles that are available?
Uh, the most of them are two thousand and three, there was one two thousand and five.
Just qualify this a little bit, the last truck he bought was how many years ago?
Um, thirteen.
That was a state truck?
Yep.
Very used. And so we've gotten eight years out of that truck.
Uh, thirteen years out of it.
Thirteen years on that.
It's, the truck's twenty-seven years old now.
Last two years at least.
Yeah.
So we get, we get a truck bought probably twenty thousand on a state bid.
Yeah.
Versus fifty-five thousand dollars for a new. I would, it's your department.
Yep.
Do you think new can be justified?
There is some good reasons to go new, um, but like Ethan was saying, we were looking at single axles. There is kind of a need for a little bigger truck, but we just don't know how well it'll, how well we'll handle it in the city limits, so. This was a very, like he said.
A double axle truck drives the same as a single axle truck.
Yeah, but the beds are shorter, you don't have to worry about overhead wires as much, it's, there is just some differences.
Maneuverability?
A little bit, it's probably not as bad, yeah, that's not so much.
Less pounds per square inch on the, on the streets.
Yeah.
With a double axle. So you can, that's a benefit right there, we're talking about buying four extra tires.
Yeah.
Uh, we're, how many miles do you, how many sets of tires do you wear out?
Um, I don't think we've replaced the tires on those trucks yet, so.
Thirteen years.
Well, with this, at this point, we're looking for a motion to give approval to not exceed twenty thousand, is that correct?
Yeah, it'd be for us to, to bid via Purple Wave on a potential purchase. And like I said, they go out of their price range, that's great, I mean, to put it in comparison, that's sixty thousand for um, the single, a new tandem would be closer to a hundred.
I would think so, I, actually I didn't price that one, but.
So. How about we make a motion not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars bid on a purple wave for a dump truck for the City of Halsted? Second little cushion there, kind of twenty-five thousand is.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. More discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? Motion passes.
Okay, we've got an executive session here. Make a motion that Halsted City Council recess into executive session for twenty minutes to discuss pending contract negotiations. Pursuant to consultation with attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, exception KSAT's seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B two. To include governing body, city manager and city attorney. Open meeting to reconvene at seven fifty-five.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion passes, we'll see you back at seven fifty-five.
We'll be going back from executive session because the council president.
And he'll do is say, I don't know where they were.
Okay, we're back here. Is there any action to be taken and the executive session? I see it done. We're ready for motion for another executive session here.
A move at city council recessed into executive session for thirty minutes to discuss performance of a city agent seven boy. Pursuant to personnel matters of non-elected personnel, exception KSA seventy five dash forty three nineteen D one. To include governing body, city manager, city attorney. Open meeting to resume at eight thirty.
Second. Hold with a favor.
Aye.
Pause.
What do you carry what?
Yeah.
You can.
...
I shut my computer off and we've got governing body issues and then what else do we have?
Government reports and the manager report.
City manager report?
Yeah.
Okay, we're back. Thanks for waiting for us. Are there any decisions or discussions from our executive session? Hearing that, we'll move on. Next is a comment from the governing body. Ed will start with you.
I have nothing tonight.
Mr. Wallace? I have nothing myself. Mr. Palmer?
If I can find the one or whether send it.
And Denise?
Got nothing tonight.
Okay, with that, we've got the manager's report here.
Thank you. Council, police have had 42 calls for service, 24 traffic stopping, six criminal cases since last meeting. Fire have had 17 calls for service, which included seven hourly calls for structural fires in the Indiania area. EMS is at 517 calls for the year with 27 calls for service, two thirds of those being in Holston and a third being in the central response area since our last report. Training also continues on new equipment that the EMS department has purchased. It was spark funds that we received. Parks and Recreation has ended basketball signups today and they will begin the process of team assignment. Those practices are slated to begin in November. Pickleball games are being started and will be played at the middle school on Sundays at 7:00 PM. The bathrooms have been winterized and locked for the remainder of the year and staff also did have to perform some cleanup of the Riverside Park area due to graffiti vandalism unfortunately. Public Works continues work on repairing and replacement of water services as part of the AMI project. Currently, the AMI project is at 91% for gas and 71% for water, so overall completion of 80%. The public works staff also put out barricades in the banner for the art fair and took those down. Responded to possible gas and water main leaks, assisted with the structural engineers evaluation of 204 main. Moved the levee in the industrial park areas, removed a tree that fell into the street on College. Graded the unpaved streets and met with engineer Foraker and a contractor regarding the damage to the levee and getting that repaired. Administrative staff have continued work on building and preparation for transition to the AMI system. Training will begin this week on importing the new data and then we'll start the process of reconciling that with those final reads on the previous years. We staff have also coordinated with the SRTS committee on their meeting and attended the League of Kansas municipalities annual virtual conference. Additionally, I participated in meetings this past two weeks with the Harbin County Cares Committee, Kansas Gas Agency and the Kansas Association of City County Management. On various committee meetings, attended the Governor's Commission on Racial Equity and Justice listening session that was specific to cities this past week and then met with our insurance consultant likewise. To begin reviewing insurance submissions and quotes for city health insurance and hope that that will be on the agenda for you all next time. And that is all I have.
Speaking of the feeding, Pat, did you notice on the back of the dugout at the ball field, some bozo decided to spray a thing, his initials or something on the back of it?
Was that last week? Yeah, that sub walk grant was cleaning up, so yep, I believe so.
Ethan, did you see how many calls, EMS calls, 500?
We've had 517 for the year.
For the year. Okay, what'd you think it was?
I don't know why, yeah. Okay, it's becoming busier than just, we're pacing about 600 this year.
We need the others' work to block it and check.
Yeah.
Well, with that, that's our agenda. Unless anybody's got anything else to discuss, I will call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
For the favor.
Mine.
All approved and that's it for the night.